We're on.
Okay. Yes.
Did it look reasonable?
Um, no. I gotta do some comparison.
Okay.
It wasn't terrible.
Okay.
Well, we're a couple of minutes early, but since we're all here, why don't we get started since we're on? So, we'll open the March 20th meeting with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty then. We will take a motion on manifests.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of March 6th and March 20th, 2023, and the payroll manifest of March 7th and March 21st, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett. For the purposes of the secretary, roll call, state your name.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas. And I'll make a motion to approve the public minutes of February 27th, 2023. It has written, did we have any corrections to it?
Kelly had some minor corrections in here that...
Like punctuation and stuff?
Exactly.
Yeah, nothing substantive.
No, so I think we should accept as revised.
As, oh, as, as revised, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Second.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. A motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas. And I'll also make a motion to approve the non-public minutes from February 27th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moran. Roll call vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
All right, do we have any committee reports?
Uh, well, yeah, we did. We actually had a nice planning board meeting the other night.
Oh, tell us about it.
And I was actually a little, um, a little disturbed by what happened, but it went through anyway, so it wasn't my, nothing to do. We had a nice couple that came in from town. They took over, uh, what's her name's place, Home 156 here. Town, we bought it with conservation money, and they're doing a farm and stuff on it, and they have dinners, they host there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was really nice and stuff like this. But instead of doing the due diligence, this is my opinion, this isn't, nothing against, I'm just saying that to watch over the many years of planning board experience that I have, to watch something like this get passed and get through so quickly, like we, it was like a one-hour discussion, not even a one-hour discussion, nothing about fire, nothing about septic, nothing about nothing, for them to host up to 20 parties of 40-something people...
Which they've already been doing.
No, but the only, they didn't, they had a, um...
Special event.
A special event thing from us.
Ah, okay, okay.
Which limited them.
Okay.
Now they can do up to 20, which is, and there was no, no questions about what the highway had to say, or about, you know, access to 156 being a state road for these events with this many cars, no emergency access for the fact of if there was a fire, how do you get all these cars and these people out? Cause actually with the, with the rule is now they could have up to 99. They said they can't, because they can't actually host that many at the time, but there's no, if they want to have a party for 99, cause they're using the same rules as it was under the, um...
Oh, it just...
Was there, is there added parking?
Uh, we don't know, we never saw anything. Nothing! Nothing!
But the planning board just went ahead and passed.
Pushed it right through.
Interesting.
You know, cause it was conservation land, there was a couple of things on there which gave them a lot of free access, which gave them a lot of leeway to what they can do.
Yep.
But you thought if you were going to have something that was going to be hosted as a money-making fund, I mean, they do make money for these things, it's not free to go to these dinners.
Right.
And the fact that we don't know, the Capulet House has been around for 50 years or whatever, they lived there, we don't know a single thing about their septic system to hold these many people, they, you know, nothing brought up about bringing, briefly brought up about bringing party parties in, but they said it's expensive, so, you know, there's a lot of, a real lot of stuff. If you watch the minutes and go, look, from what we do, from what that board does, and I'll say I'm part of the board, so I'm not gonna say general, how we vet most people that come in for whatever they're doing, it's usually two or three meetings, and it's usually intensive questions and nothing, nothing. It was shock the shit out of me, sorry to say that, but that's just, it was uncanny how quickly, uh, some of the members on that board were through and through.
Interesting.
And I was very, um, cause there was nothing even asked about the police department for what they did with the 40, 50 people, there's nothing asked about the fire department's opinion, none.
Interesting.
They just went on the fact that they had that special exception while they had permission then, so, but up to 20? And, you know, they said they're summertime events, but that could be 20 events in three months, four months. That's a lot! That's not one a month!
Yeah.
And they just pushed it through, so very, um, and I told Ed that I was bringing it up at the meeting, so, and this is all part, I, he knew I was bringing this up to you. I mean, again, it was something that was very, and again, eight years, I mean, I've seen, and for what we did for the people that wanted that water cross, what they did for those three there, the, what the board put those people through to hold that event...
Yep.
Just three!
Yep.
On a huge parcel of land that's, I mean, just...
Yeah.
And with...
Yep.
You know, for what they did to make that right there, and all the legal stuff they went through and everything, and for this, nothing, not even a questions. And you can watch the minutes and make your own judgment, but I'm telling you, it was, and when I spoke up about it, another member had to speak, well, that's another thing, but that doesn't matter, but it would, um, I was looked at as, why am I asking so many questions? And I'm usually the one that's gonna say, sure, go ahead, do it, you know? So, I was like on a total role reverse, which was very...
Interesting.
Yeah, so, I don't know where we can go or where we're gonna go with that, but...
I mean, it's pretty much a done deal now if the planning board...
It pretty much is, but it's just something that the, um, I was really taken back by how people on that board, when it's something they want, they will easily push it through, but when it's something that's, you know, it might not be towards their favor of whatever, you know, how much they'll make somebody have a hard time, um, and, you know, push their values on it, so...
Okay.
But every board's like that, in some sort of way, so...
For sure.
But again, something if you wanna look up, hopefully we'll have no issues in the future with this events, and everything goes perfectly smooth, couple was really nice people, and I really like what they're doing, the whole concept, it was more the disapproval of what the planning board, it was my, from my opinion.
Okay.
And that's the only board report I have. We had a couple of other cases, but they weren't nearly as exciting to me, so...
Okay, no 300, no CIP, no budget. Marston, there is work underway now to, um, get dugouts built.
What, I'm sorry?
Dugouts.
Okay.
And, um, they are actively, uh, going after lowals to provide the lumber, so that's the only major thing that's going on out there.
Where are we at with the, uh, testing and all that stuff for the public water source?
Ew, John, do you know?
Yeah, basically we're on hold, we gave it to Gary at the irrigation company to follow through, he has not got back. I would say this week we're going to start talking to the two engineers at Jones and Beach who did work, and see if we can get one of them to volunteer to do the engineering piece, and see if they can then get it submitted. There is a, uh, there are some questions that Dale cannot answer on the form, and we need an engineering, an engineer to supply, and we're kind of on hold for that.
Do we know, know the timeframe, is the when that we can expect, uh, anything?
Uh, I, it depends upon, uh, we're trying to get a volunteer, we may have to pay somebody, if we pay somebody, we'll probably get it quicker.
Okay.
So, right now, we're trying to work with volunteers.
What would it cost if we had somebody else do it?
Uh, I would think a thousand dollars would put a pretty good dent into it, so it's not, it's not cheap, but on the other hand, uh, I couldn't guarantee that's the number, but there is some research that needs to be done, measurements in terms of the, uh, there's a protection zone that needs to be around the wellhead. I think the biggest issue is going to be, is the chemical treatment and pesticide going on the field going to adversely affect getting the well permitted as a drinking supply?
The wellhead's enclosed though, right?
The wellhead, uh, the driller said it went down 180 feet, give or take 20, um, to bedrock.
Yeah.
So, it's a very deep sand, so that, um, helps to reduce the, um, uh, risk of contamination from surface, however, with those fields right there, and you're gonna be fertilizing them, you're gonna be putting pesticides on them, they're within, I'd say 50 feet of the well, you know, and usually they want a 200-foot radius around the public water supply, so the question's going to become, and that's why we want an engineer to talk, demand, draw, and to, to answer that question. The well driller has connections to the water board at the state level who approves these, and he thinks it can be done, but it's just a matter of getting all the, uh, facts and numbers calculated and put together. If I don't get a volunteer this week, we'll go ahead and Ellen can pay somebody.
Spend that money already. Okay, town administrators report, actually, let me back up, I should've said this at first. Welcome to Ellen White, really happy to have you here as our new town administrator. John has served us quite well over the past several months, but we're also thrilled to have you here.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled to be here.
Might have to lean in, cause I don't think anybody can see you on TV.
I'll get my showcase next week.
Yeah.
All right, town administrators report.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll do it this week, so Ellen sees how I've done it, and then it'll be up to her how she decides to do it going forward from there. First item, will the board approve moving the town meeting from the school to the town hall? You don't have much choice, the school doesn't want it because school's in session.
Yep.
Need a motion.
Make a motion that the select board approve moving the town meeting to town hall, uh, on, uh, on March 28th.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett, roll call, vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
We have a problem in the gym with lighting, some of the lights are out, they're very high. To replace them, we want to replace them with LEDs, and we're gonna have to rent a, um, scissors lift to go in there. The lift is a hundred dollars each way for transportation and 240 a day. The total cost is gonna be between 800 and 2,500. Do you want to proceed with, uh, fixing the lighting in the gym?
So, remind me, what, what is the issue with the lighting?
Uh, some of them are out, they're not, you know, they're, uh, they're, they're not working.
And you, you were planning on some ceiling tile replacement too, right? For the stained and broken ones?
Uh, we had not, and we, that was not part of the quote.
Oh.
We could try to build that into it once we get the scissors lift, if you, I don't know how high it is to replace those tiles.
I just assume if you, we have to rent a piece of equipment, you do it all at once. So, if we gotta replace the ceiling tiles, we do it at the same time.
Okay, so, uh, let me, uh, research that and come back to you then.
Okay.
Ellen, come back to you.
No point in doing it twice.
Yep, well, I assume the two that are out at the far end for the, um, rappelling rope or whatever you wanna call it, that we're just gonna put ceiling tiles in there and close that back in, that we're not gonna use those again, is that correct assumption? Okay.
They're easy to put in and take out, you just tip them up and, you know, tilt them at an angle and drop them, drop them in, it's, it's easy, it's just the time.
Yeah.
And driving the scissor jack around to, to get to each one, so...
Yeah, the scissors jack is 240 a day, um, so we may just wanna plan to have it two days, and the electrician uses it one, and then we have somebody use it to replace the tile. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll work on that. The, um, next board meeting, it's scheduled for the 27th, which is the night before the ballot vote. Do you wanna have it on the 27th? Do you wanna wait until you go to the 29th, so you've got the results of town meeting 30, 31? The one after that would be April 10th, but you could meet on April 3rd, so if you meet the week of the 27th, later that week, it would be this current board. If you meet April 3rd, the following week, it would be the new board.
Can you explain why?
Um, the law is that no person shall, and I'm quoting from RSA 66910, "No person shall assume a town office until after the time period for requesting a recount is over", and 66930, "Any person for whom a vote was cast and recorded for any office at a town election may no later than the Friday following the election apply in writing for a recount." It's not how close it is, it's anyone who gets a vote could request a recount. So, the recount period goes until Friday of next week, so until Friday of next week, all of you would continue to sit. The following week, if you go to April 3rd, it would be the new board. So, do you wanna meet...
So, just to, just to...
Yep.
Point out, this isn't how we've done it in the past. This is the way we should've and should moving forward, but I just wanna apply that that is different.
So, the, the question I have, do you want a meeting next week?
What do you mean it's not how we've done it in the past?
In the past, the town clerk has sworn in people who were recently elected right away.
Did we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but...
Last year?
John has clarified for us that within the law, we should be doing it after the recount.
In practice, if it's a big vote difference, it's not gonna change.
Correct.
And there won't be a recount, but the law is there...
Yep.
So that in some states, you have to be within a half a percent or a percent or something.
You guys wanna come to another meeting or not?
Well, what's on the agenda for that? Like, what would be, what would be the topics of discussion?
Okay, so, um, the, the topics of discussion, if it was after the deliberative session, would be the 350 truck...
Yep.
In terms of whether you wanna order it. You could have recreation come in on the move of office space, since you've, you're familiar with all of the discussion, as opposed to waiting until a new board, and there might be something that comes up as a result of the voting, that this board wants to take action in, because you're familiar with the budget in terms of starting the default budget calculation, uh, process and everything else. So, what I'm saying is there may be some things that you wanna clean up as a board after the ballot vote.
But the ballot votes on the 28th.
Yeah.
Right, so you can go the 29th or 30th. If you go the 27th, you're not cleaning up anything, you can't vote on the truck yet, you can't.
I know, that's why I didn't...
So, the question is, you guys will be sitting on the board, is there value in having a meeting on the 29th and having Tony and I there to help wrap things up, or are you confident with whoever the new board members are, that you'll be able to get them up to speed and move forward with them?
In my opinion, I'd rather wrap things up, and then the new board will start fresh going forward. These are little odds and ends that I think that we can clean up before the new board starts.
I was thinking the exact opposite.
I know, I could see it in your face.
It is a surprise!
Throw the new guys right in with the fire and say, hey, here you go!
There'll be plenty of fire for them to be walking through, so, you know?
We could meet April 3rd, and that would still be us, right?
No, April 3rd would be the new board.
April 3rd, cause the...
Cause your past Friday of the recount, the recount period would be the, uh...
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
The Friday after, after the 28th, which must be April 1.
April 1st is a Saturday, but yeah, Friday, the 31st.
Friday, the 31st, then, would be, you know, your end of the recount, but it's basically the end of the day, so you can't do, if, it's...
Can't do much.
You can't do the re...
Yeah.
Until Saturday, until April comes, it would be this board, basically.
I'm, I'm fine either way, whatever you guys want.
Tony?
I'll be in Boston on Wednesday and Thursday after the election, so I'll be getting back in town late.
And the big item of the truck is, I would like to see the new board vote on that.
There you have it.
So, so then the...
I mean, if you're okay, I mean, do you want more discussion on that?
Well, it's not just the truck, I mean...
Well, but if you're gonna be missing Tony, you're already...
Already down anyways, so...
Yeah, you're already down.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, so, then the question becomes, right now on the calendar, it's April 10th, I assume you wanna move it to April 3rd, so you get to it more quickly.
Well, is that, we switched those weeks on you, is going back to this week, you know, having a...
This week worked, as you can see, um, you know...
Well, right, I'm saying, so like, next week, next Monday wouldn't work, but the week after, we stick on the Mondays...
Yes.
That we're working now for the future.
So, April 3rd would work for you.
Yes. Yes, otherwise I'll be running...
However...
God, I got you, I got you.
The only thing, the only thing I'll say about that is that Kelly had laid out the calendar trying to have the least impact of the schedule, uh, on the schedule because of holidays.
Yes.
So, that's...
The, the difficulty we're gonna have is Ben's schedule is every other week. The problem you have is every third month, you have five Mondays, and it throws your schedule off for the next three months.
Right.
That's, that's why, if you wanna say first and third, or you wanna say as it has in the past, second and fourth, you can, but it's going to mess Ben up. The other option is you could start later...
Well, we can let the next board decide that, right?
It's fine with me?
The new board will decide everything except the first meeting, do you wanna do the third?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll post for 4/3. And I'll let Lori and Dawn know, you know, what the RSA's are in case they question, why they're waiting until the 3rd. And actually, if there's a recount, one of you will continue to be on the board until the recount is completed.
Okay. For whichever seat it is that's, cause there's two seats, so for whichever seat is being contested?
Well, you'll have to decide which of the two you consider has been...
Doesn't say, how do you tell?
Yeah.
It's just the...
Fair, 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 okay.
The top two winners.
Right.
All right, well, let's worry about that when that happens, we know now...
It's unlikely, but if there is a recount on the 4th, on the 3rd of April, the two of you will be back.
Okay, we'll deal with that when it comes.
Assuming the recount hasn't been completed.
Yep.
Next item, trail donations, the Conservation Commission's received a hundred dollars under the powers of the Conservation RSA 36A colon 4. Said commission may receive gifts of money and other things by gift, subject to the approval of the local body. So, are you willing to, uh, accept this donation? And I would make it a blanket acceptance of other donations towards the Conservation Commission Trail Fund.
How many are there in total?
Right now, there's only one.
Oh.
Just to cover us in case anything comes up again.
But if another, if somebody put another $50 in...
Gotcha.
Are you authorizing donations to, you could put a cap up to a thousand dollars, and then you'd have to revisit it or something?
No, you know what, I kinda like knowing when people donate to it.
Okay, so you wanna do it every time?
It's only two seconds out of our meeting, it's not like it's gonna kill us, it's, no.
So, make a motion for a hundred, make a motion to accept the donation of a hundred dollars.
I make a motion to accept the donation of a hundred dollars for the Conservation Commission for the trails.
Second.
Motion made by John Moran, seconded by Tony Dumas, roll call, vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett. Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Okay, the town seal, um, there has been an issue with the town seal using by non-town organization. This postcard, for example, went out by a political organization with the town seal. We got the bill for the postcard, incidentally, because they saw the town seal, so the company who did this sent us the bill, even though it was a political organization that was doing it. I would like...
How do we resolve that?
We sent the bill to somebody else, we didn't pay it. We told the, we told the, um, the ones who did this card that it wasn't us, they needed to find the organization that's listed here in the return address. So, what I would like the town to do is to vote to restrict the use of the seal to, um, town government, including boards, departments, committees, and commissions, and forbid the use by those that are not a part of municipal government.
So, we've talked about it, using our town seal, like when they were doing the beer, we gave them permission to use the seal to put on the beer, right? I didn't think already that you, you, if you wanted to use the seal, you had to ask us.
Well, that's what I wanna make, yeah, I wanna vote to make it clear that nobody can use the seal without a vote, vote by the board unless it is a...
Well, what repercussions is there by you, if they did, if they use the seal anyways?
Um, I think...
I mean, it's great to have, it's great to have something in writing, but, I mean, if, if we don't do anything about them using it, who cares?
The only way you can legally forbid them from using it is trademark, and get it trademarked. That's gonna cost you a few hundred dollars. I would suggest for now, you make a motion, you take a vote, and you make it clear they're not supposed to do it, and hope that organizations that are lobbying for the civic good will not misuse it.
Yeah, and it may be a few hundred dollars, but it's good for 75 years, right?
Trademark's good for quite a while.
Yeah.
Did you have, did you ever encounter this situation?
No.
We, we've had trouble in other towns with them misusing the seal with...
Our seal is really pretty cool, so...
It's a good seal!
Oh, it's the reason.
Well, there was somebody who came, what, about a year ago that we approved?
Yeah, the beer.
For the beer, for the 300.
No, there was something else too. There was somebody else who was making little plaques or something like that.
I, I would think you'd be careful to try to restrict it to something closely related to a town purpose, rather than a civic...
Yep.
Like the 300th?
The 300th would be a town purpose, yeah, that's a perfect example.
All I'll say is, it was a precedent where somebody was doing something for their own gain, and we said yes. We may have limited it, I don't exactly remember, but that would be, um, you know, making a vote tonight would impact it going forward.
Taking, taking a vote now would mean this is the policy going forward, and the board could make an exception if someone presented a reasonable case for why allowing them to do it, say, they were doing something at Patacaway, and they wanted to, and it was the state, and they wanted to have the Raymond seal and the Nottingham seal and...
It, it should be time-bound, though.
Yes, it should be, yeah.
Okay.
So, is there a vote to restrict the use?
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I point out that the town seal is routinely used by journalists? The forum uses it, how you use it?
Yeah, but, but the forum and you are not town organizations, which I believe that we don't wanna create the impression that you are an arm of the town government. So, the seal, the seal should be reflecting that it's town government.
Do you genuinely believe that anybody thinks that we're arms of the town government?
Clearly, the, the company that made those postcards thought that it was...
Yeah, the company that made these postcards thought that.
Because of the presence of that seal, that it was the town's responsibility.
That's who they send the bill to.
More journalists.
No, no, but I mean, that's a perfect example of somebody making that mistake, you know, and it's a logical mistake to make, right? You see the town seal, and you're like, well, it must be, must be town sanctioned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
All right, do you need a motion? Or are you just looking for consensus?
No, I want a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion, the select board, vote to restrict the use of the town seal to town government, uh, usage only, including boards, departments, committees, seal to town government usage only, including boards, departments, committees, and commissions, and forbid the use by those not a part of municipal government.
With the exception of the board's approval.
With the exception of the board's approval.
Yeah, and you need to be consistent in the exceptions you make.
Yeah.
Should we have guidelines set up as to, are there these criteria that we'll accept it, or?
I would wait until somebody makes application to use it and then think through the issue, but for right now, restrict it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, second by Ben Bartlett, roll call.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
The Public Works Department needs a mission statement for an asset management program grant that we have. I'm suggesting, Sean and I are suggesting the following. The mission of the Town of Nottingham is to enhance the quality of life in the Town of Nottingham by providing professional public works services to safely and efficiently manage the town's infrastructure.
Is that, is that standard? Is that the type of description?
The engineer who's requiring us to have one suggested it.
But do other towns have mission statements like this?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's quite common for the town to have one and for the major departments to have one.
It's a mission statement, I mean, really, I mean, whatever.
I know, I know, it's, it's fine.
It's like putting fancy something on something, doesn't need to be fancy, but whatever.
Some get very elaborate.
I bet you-
I have seen towns hold meetings where they had 100 residents come and work on a mission statement with stickies and, you know, these boards have written up and what they wanted mentioned.
We'll show up some night and bring it to the board. We'll ask to be put on the agenda.
Three, three, volume one, volume two, and volume three, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, the select board approve, uh, the Department of Public Works' mission statement as proposed.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, second by John Moran, roll call, vote.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Okay, the next item is, we are advertising for vacant positions.
Number seven.
Oh, seven, good, thank you. Questions have arisen over who we allow to link to the website, and the issue becomes a First Amendment issue, that if you allow some, you've got to allow others. I suggest a fairly tight hyperlink policy that restricts it. I developed such policies in the past, I can make a suggestion on what it would look like, but it would restrict the town's website so that it's just governmental purposes only. And if you wanted Chamber of Commerce type stuff, they go through the library or someone who has more flexibility on what they want, but the town website and the fact that you have a gov website, it's supposed to be only limited to the town. So, do you want us to work at developing a hyperlink policy? What do you think, Alan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you do it for one, you must do it for all, so it's a double benefit.
I don't think anybody should use it but the town, so I dig on it.
That's a big yes.
Okay.
I'm all for it.
Yeah. Um, the pollinator garden. I keep skipping lines, I know, eight, I'm trying to hurry through, sorry.
Why, you want to go home?
No. Uh, I like it here. We're advertising for vacant position for an equipment operator, for a foreman. We have a job description, I'd like to table this, I think there's some non-public discussion we need to have and we'll put it on a future agenda regarding the job description. If there's no objection, we'll just move on.
Absolutely.
Okay, next item, pollinator garden. At Marston, Nathaniel Vicheschi Vecchio, I think it's probably pronounced.
Lavecchio.
Lavecchio, yeah, I, yeah, I mistyped it, I think. A Nottingham Eagle Scout proposes a final service project to establish a pollinator garden at Marston Farm. Courtney supports it. They want to reestablish milkweed, which is very important for monarch butterflies and other plants to bring back pollinators. The location Courtney coordinated with, not be in the way of future development. Maintenance will typically be a couple of mowings a year. He also wants to create a few benches, and he's agreed to the use of that manufactured wood product that doesn't rot and everything, uh, can't remember what it is, but you can drill it, saw it.
Composite wood?
Yeah, yeah, composite imitation wood. Does the board approve the project?
Sounds fine.
I gotta say no to an Eagle Scout project.
Do you need a motion?
I, I would like one, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh-
Pollinator garden.
Pollinator garden at Marston for the Eagle Scout program.
Second. Yeah.
Motion, he beat you. Motion made by John Moran, second by Ben Bartlett, roll call, vote.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Okay, just, just to update you and the public, it's likely the transfer station will be closed Thursday. I'll have more information in non-public if you want. After the storm, we had three trucks in the repair shops, the 550, we still don't know when we're getting an engine, the 350, again, and one of the newer 10-wheelers had a hydraulic pump that needed replacing. Good thing we hadn't disposed of the old 300 International, that one seems to keep be chugging along. The Bobcat at the transfer station is down again. It needs to be repaired because we need to have it working in order to get trade value when the backhoe comes in, but in the interim, one of our plow contractors has a backhoe that he'll go over there a couple of times a day or whenever and just do it with his machinery, his labor. We felt that was a better option than trying to rent like we did with the backhoe last fall when we thought it would be several months, actually, it was sometime. Town election is 3/28, and you've already discussed being there. We need engineering on Marston well, we talked about. Tim Witham has resigned as animal control officer. I'm appointing Melissa Bacon, the appointment sheet will come to the board when we get-
Have you talked to her?
I've talked to her.
She's good.
She's open to doing it. I just, we just need to agree on a rate and settle that out. The copier vendor that we have went to bat for us with the lease company, and the price to buy out the lease on the one in administration dropped from $2611 to $1,000. We're waiting for that copier shuffle to occur. DPW posted roads, 13-ton limit, that's in effect now. We've had a request from a logging company to upgrade a Class 6 road. Sean, I will be working with them, the board will have to approve it. You can't improve a Class 6 road without permission from the Board of Selectmen. They'll be improving it at their cost.
The, the logging company?
The logging company pays to fix it. Ultimately, the owner of the trees that sold pays for it, but yeah, the logging company will fix it up. They obviously want to get tractor trailers in and out so they can chip the road.
Well, so here's a question for you.
Yep.
Oh, well, then, good. Do we hold a retainer of money for them to make sure that they do it?
Yeah, we usually have a bond.
Well, that's what I'm asking, we have a bond?
Yeah.
Okay, you just didn't mention it.
Oh, yeah, no, that's standard, we get a bond from most logging companies. Sorry, yeah, it's fairly standard practice. Rarely, once in a while, we have one, we don't need a bond for, it comes out on a state road.
Well, I know, for the planning board, we get bonds for all new construction, new roads that go on the list, but it's not often that we have a, an old Class 5 road where somebody's going to go destroy it, basically, and I'm wanting to make sure that we had a bond so that if they do destroy it, that we can at least have money to refix it.
Well, if we had 175-acre lot on a, on a town road, gravel road, we get a bond so that they guaranteed they fix it at the end and it was kept up to standard. We, we, we get bonds regularly on roads for logging companies. Probably the only exception would be someone was coming out directly onto the state highway, paved road, they just need to bond the entrance, you know, that, they, they, they need to put the, the rock to keep mud from getting dragged out onto the road, kind of. Transfer station, um, we had a new furnace installed, uh, the storage tanks need to be protected with bollards, I don't know why those storage tanks are unprotected up there, the, the gas tanks. We need to either put jersey barriers or bollards or something in per the inspection. The, um, heating and, the HVAC man who does this, Bodett, says, we're wasting our money if we don't insulate the building, because there's holes in the insulation and in the building and everything else. That transfer station has a limited life, but I don't see you replacing it in the next year or two, so it's probably worth putting some insulation work in, you know, getting some of it fixed up, um, to try to reduce the amount of heat loss.
Any of the money, any of the money that we put in for the, was it the building fund or whatever, could that, any of that cover what?
No, that has to be for major systems.
Okay.
The way it's written, roof, plumbing, heating, I mean, a major plumbing, heating, it doesn't recover what routine maintenance or, now, if you go through and you do a major project on the building, you could say it's a major system, but if what you're doing is spending a few hundred dollars on insulation and having highway crew tack it up, that's, you're not going to get reimbursed from the, from that fund. I will say, um, the transfer station is out of date, it's, uh, needs to be replaced, it needs to be bigger, and you've got to move it.
Tell us something we don't know, John.
I know.
Go on now, just, thanks for-
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I, I, I mean, I know the Building Assessment Committee met again tonight. They did a preliminary report that was printed in the, in the town report. I'm assuming that when they finalize that and it comes to the board, then, then there's going to have to be decisions about, you know, what's prioritized and what the plan is moving forward.
Yeah, the, the CIP has-
I went by Lee yesterday.
What'd you say?
I went by the Town of Lee's yesterday, or Saturday, their transfer station. Beautiful. So nice and organized in the buildings where we go, I've just-
You ought to see Farmington, I agree, there are some, but they had room. The key is room.
Yeah.
You've got to be able to spread it out.
Yeah, okay.
PFAS, um, the attorney is still working on clarifying the request, there's 151 communities at this point that have gotten notice of this, and the attorneys are banding together from these towns. Some firms represent several towns, so they are pushing back and will be going to the judge. So I do have non-public items, um, for us to consider, but that's what I had for public.
Ben, you wanted time, you asked for time tonight?
Yeah, well, well, real quick before I do that, in regards to the 550, I did speak to Sean earlier today, and Ford is about eight months behind, we're four months into it, so he suspects within the next four months, we'll have a new motor for that 550 that's sitting at McFarlane.
Yeah, and, and you could also share that there are some options now. We thought we couldn't get a truck like we want, but now there are some in the area. The one, nearest one we could find a month ago was New York State, but there are some local, you saw one.
Yeah.
Sean went, looked one at Concan today, so.
Okay.
So, um, Steve Soroff could not be here tonight, however, he would like me to call him, put him on speaker to address Donna and Tony. So if you don't mind-
Okay.
And we have some items to present to you.
He's not going to sing to us, is he?
God, I hope not.
Or tell us jokes, don't let him tell us jokes. No jokes.
Good evening, Steve.
Okay, so handing them into the bag now.
Thank you.
Okay, but I really, uh, uh, Ben, you just told me a thing or two, and I just want to thank you for everything you've done, uh, specifically, uh, me, the town, the impossible of the law of things, and that, for everything you've done for Marston and the 300, so we really just thank you for, for your dedication and, and leadership and your support for me, and your leadership, that's what I, you know.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate that, Steve, thank you very much.
Y'all, y'all set, Steve?
Should we get to looking?
Oh, that's a hat.
It's a hat.
It's a Nottingham 300 hat, nice.
And it matches my shirt.
Yeah, matches your shirt perfectly. That's awesome. That's awesome.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Ben, for-
Steve could not be here, he was not, he wasn't feeling well, so.
Thank you for being the master of ceremony. Oh, more gifts. Oh, thank you very much.
There's actually one more thing coming from the town that I thought we had another meeting, but how do you, you'll get it at 28.
That's very nice, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, do we have anything else for public?
Assessing.
Oh, assessing, how could I forget?
We already did town election prep, town seal, website policy. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the timber yield tax for map 75 and 74, lot 1 for each, map 3, lot 12-2, map 3, lot 12-1, map 76, lot 2-2, and map 52, lot 4-1.
Second, oh.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, second by Ben Bartlett, roll call.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, John Moran.